Okay, here we go.
Lisa Rodriguez.
Okay.
Hi, this is Lisa Rodriguez. I am the one who prepared the site plan for the Pettit's for the expansion to the Old Daily custom catering business. And I'll recap why we're at zoning, why we went back to planning or to planning and then back to zoning, and then I'll let Steph fill in with some color for you. So the project is to expand their current catering business at the intersection of Two Northern Drive, Northern Drive and 125th Street. The idea is to, the initial idea, to buy the property next door and take a piece of the land from that two-family house property and add it to the Two Northern Drive property to expand it to allow for coolers, walk-in coolers to be added to the building so that they can expand their business within this location. They, when we were here in October, the zoning board asked us, would we please go to the planning board and get their input? In case the planning board asks us or makes a suggestion that would affect the proposed lot line. So we have since done that. We went to the planning board and we got their input. We met out at the site, the Pettit's and I, and talked about different ideas. The input that we got from the planning board really did not affect the placement of the lot line. We did, as a result of that meeting, reduce the curb cut on Northern Boulevard because it's a pretty wide curb cut and it really wasn't necessary. So we're able to extend the sidewalk a little bit on the north side and reduce that curb cut substantially. And we added a little bit of sidewalk to the south side to connect the two current sections of sidewalks and have them jog around the dumpster, the enclosed dumpster area. So that was the result of our consultation with planning. And so now we're back and the Pettit's would like to get these variances so that they could move forward with the addition if possible. And I'm going to let Steph speak to you about the need for the addition and why it's important to the business and being able to, you know, stay in that space. So, go ahead, Pat. Steph, take it away.
Okay. So, right now, our walk-ins are in the inside of the building and they take up a considerable amount of space. And we have been partnered and cohabitated with Cookie Therapy Albany, which is a business that kept us from going under essentially during this pandemic. But it's proved to be almost impossible to live together in the space as we start going back into some normalcy. We need to be able to segregate our cooking spaces and especially the cookie, the cold spaces. And so this is a great way for us to acquire that space and stay here in Troy is to push the walk-ins out because they're in the inside of the building. And they are in need of being replaced anyway. We're at that time in our, you know, rotation of equipment that we're on the verge. So this is the best location. It's actually just keeping them where they are in our kitchen, but moves them out. There's that. Anybody? Any questions?
Hey, does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
What are the dimensions of the lot? Because I'm looking at the map. I just can't figure it out.
Are you talking about our lot, the triangle that we live on?
Yeah. Did somebody share the site?
Is she still here?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't get in on my computer because there's a problem. If you don't have the Zoom app loaded, it says that it's unsafe and your, my thirty system won't let me into the meeting through my.
Oh, James has got it. There we go.
So it's a very irregularly shaped lot, this floozy plaza. So that's a complicated question. Which lot are you interested in? There's the original Two Northern Drive. There is the original thirty-seven hundred and fifth, hundred and twenty-fifth street, and there is the proposed for each zone. Which one?
I'm actually curious about the entire triangle.
Okay, the entire triangle. So, let's see.
I see, I see some of the foot markings. I mean, a Pythagorean theorem should be able to figure this out, but I haven't done high school math and.
Yeah, okay. So I haven't figured it out that way, but it appears to be about a hundred and twenty feet across 125th Street by seventy-six feet on Sixth Avenue. Yeah. And the, and then it goes across seventy-five feet behind that Chinese restaurant. And the angle is one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other, do we have any further questions for the applicant?
I just want to be clear on the, the property on 125th Street. It looks like that was like purpose-built as a multifamily house. So, half of this, the, this, is it the special use? Just so that I'm clear. The special use is to, here it is, to legalize the existing two-family use?
Yeah. And just to provide some clarity, the, the existing use there is, is legal now. It's a legal non-conforming use. It doesn't need anything to stay there. The applicant has been seeking a variance to cement that use there in perpetuity, you know, in the case of a fire or something like that. This is a bit unorthodox, not something that we usually see. And I just, I'll reiterate that the, you know, the special use permit, this is a use allowed by right. Residential on the first floor is a use allowed by right, but this is not, you know, the special use permit is an opportunity for the board to address concerns and apply stipulations if they felt it was necessary. I didn't specifically highlight that I didn't think there was any need in the, in the staff report, but I don't, I don't feel like that residential use is out of character. You know, there are residential uses across the street, for example.
Add a little bit more color, John. I think, I think it's actually, it has to do with financing and banks. They like, they'd like to see it memorialized.
I saw that. So the first question was, I'll lead up to the second. I just want to make sure, we can consider these separately? I'm not, I'm not saying one is good, one is better, not at all, but they can and should be considered separately, right?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I have a question based upon the staff notes of the planning commission. Maybe I missed this. Changes made, some changes be made to the application and you're coming back here without having made those? Or did you already address that?
We addressed them, but we looked at, so they did ask us to look at the idea of can we load in from one side of the building? And the Pettit studied that and they said that that does not work. There's too much loading and unloading that goes on and they're related to different, you know, processes. One is, I believe, finished product and the other is the raw materials coming in. And it didn't make sense to take away one of the doors.
Okay.
But we were able to reduce that curb cut in the back there by.
And that, yep.
Yeah, at least twenty feet. And then we are connecting the sidewalk on 124th Street.
Right.
Lisa, do I have the wrong site plan up then? Because I don't see that connection noted on the site plan. I think this is, I'm fairly certain this is the most recent site plan you had sent, and it still shows the, the parking spaces going across the sidewalk there.
Oh, no, no. It's on the other side, up on Northern. It was, it's this curb here that was much bigger. That's been narrowed.
Right, yeah, I understand. I understand that. And I think that's a, that's a great change that the curb cut has been reduced. But, but specifically, the, some of the concerns and frankly, I mean, we're not, loading and unloading is certainly something we discuss, but I understand that it's a more intimate use, right? It's more intimate thing that you guys have to work out and that the city, it would be challenging for us to understand your loading needs, right? The issues that we do understand very, very clearly are the parking that straddles the private and public space and the dumpsters in the right of way. Those are things that will not, that I have not seen pass the planning commission's review. They, they continuously ask, propose applicants to change those aspects of their proposals. You know, the right of way is not an acceptable place for dumpster, dumpster storage in most instances. And it doesn't seem like it would be fair in this instance either.
That's where they exist and that's where the city placed them in 2003. That wasn't our doing. We poured a pad on the opposite side. And what happened is we were creating a dangerous situation with the garbage trucks backing up on Northern Drive.
Right, right. And we had discussed the, the difficulties of Northern Drive in, during the meeting with the planning commission as well.
So, so the, these exist where they are, one, because the, we, we, this entire project was done holding hands with the city. There wasn't a thing that we did without a person advising us. And that's exactly why those dumpsters are there. And that it has proved to be a very good location because it's easily accessible for all of our recycling and garbage coming right out of those doors and we can wrap around and put them right there. You know, there was discussion about putting dumpsters across the street in the parking lot, but that makes it really challenging to keep crossing a street and dragging things afar distance when the city is the one who told us to put it there and we've been working quite nicely with it there for, you know, fourteen years.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to whoever had said that in 2003. A lot, a lot has obviously changed since then. And we're, we're, again, this is not something that we would normally see the planning commission approve. And, and I understand that it's a convenient location for the catering hall, but it's a very inconvenient location for anybody who is not going into the catering hall. And that's what the public space, when we're looking at the public space and analyzing the public space, that's who we're thinking is, is not just the people going in and out of the catering hall or the people who work there specifically, but the people who are passing by, the people who live nearby. And that's, that's what the boards are, are going to have to consider when they're reviewing.
Well, there was actually, in the, at the point in which we had the place here, there were noise tests that we did. And if we put it in the parking lot, they could hear it a lot more on Sixth Avenue, especially the houses that back up to that parking lot. And at the time, we didn't own that parking lot. But since then, you know, we've made great efforts on timing for when the dumpster collection happens and keeping it away from as many people in the neighborhood as possible. And that's what that has, has done. I mean, we get closer to residences.
Are you referring to this parking lot across the street?
Yes.
Right, right. And I don't, I don't mean to, and I don't want to start, you know, going through different aspects that aren't on these plans. But again, to be clear, a lot has changed since 2003 and a lot that exists here would not be approved today. One element that I would, I'm curious about is where I'm, where I'm showing right now is this area is now going to be part of the catering hall's lot, correct?
Right.
So what, what will this driveway be used for?
Well, not for the business. What we were doing was, we were going to add fencing and green space for the, for the tenants. And.
Is that this, this line here?
But, Lisa, it's not that far over, is it?
Um, let's see, the, I think it's ten feet. So this, this plan, James, yes, earlier, if this was the correct plan for the addition that we're talking about, it isn't. I prepared this plan specifically to address the issue of the use of the house as a two-family house. There's a different plan that actually has our proposed addition on it from the October meeting. That shows the addition. And so we left ten feet from the addition to the proposed property line that's shown in this. The ten feet is on the commercial side. So parking for this property would be off of a hundred and, it would be off Sixth Avenue.
So, so, so I don't want to, and I don't mean for this to be a site plan review because it's certainly not. It's just.
Basically what it is coming down to, isn't it?
Well, well, I think it's essential that the, the board is considering that they, they could put the planning commission in a challenging position. And this has happened before where the ZBA will approve variances and the planning commission will struggle to have the right mechanisms to critique, make meaningful critiques of, of site plans where they're needed.
So, James, would the applicant be willing to, like, if we were to stipulate that our approval is contingent upon a, you know, an acceptable solution between the applicant and the planning department?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Katie, was that question directed at me?
Um, not necessarily. I guess I'm asking if, is that, is that what we could?
Katie, you could do something. Yeah, you could do something like that. The, I would think the only negative to that would be if, for whatever reason, through the site plan review process, the, the variances change and they need to revisit you for an amended approval. But that's really on the applicant, right? That's not, you know.
Yeah.
You guys just might see it again, right?
Right. And I, you know, I, I'm, I'm just, who uses that parking? That's right next to the dumpsters and that little spot that we're talking about because it looked like Old Daily vehicles in the picture, but I don't know if that's the norm.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, I think we're confused. This, this is our parking and generally this is where customers come to pick up cookies. Um, or we'll line up catering vans to load them because they kind of don't happen at the same time. First of all, it's really important. It's not a catering hall. There's very little interaction with customers really coming to this location. Generally, we do deliveries. But we have city contracts. So, I mean, this is all speaking pre, hopefully post-COVID. We have trucks that load on either side. You've got your vending trucks and carts that go to the city of Albany and other locations and they load on the other side. And then this side is where you load in and out with like your, your Cisco, Lusco paper orders and so on come in through the 125th Street side. And then also where like a service party for catering could be going out. But it's very, it's not unusual at peak times for both sides of the building to be launching. And those spaces against the building are part of our loading area and they double up for customers to be able to come in. Like right now, if you pull into those spaces, we'll come out and we bring your food and put it right in the trunk of your car.
Okay. So, you know, I, I guess to kind of piggyback on what James was saying, my concern is that there's a lot of foot traffic in this neighborhood. And that, you know, that literally the, the sidewalk stops for all of that parking. So, and I know that that predates.
Well, the truth is, I think it's.
Isn't the sidewalk problem being questioned on the Northern Drive side?
Yes, that's where we addressed it. But I have to tell you that, and I understand and support this because I live in the city of Troy, that there are a lot of things long-term that need to be addressed. But this entire point is a dangerous anomaly. Because even if I have, no matter what, you're going to have a break in the sidewalk. And then when you come to this point, this is a treacherous point in order to cross the street. I mean, like, I almost feel like I wish we had no sidewalks and warnings, like, don't go here. Because when we first opened, and this is a really old, ugly picture, but when we did, we had more landscaping out front and we were going to put a picnic table out there. And if you were to sit in my office, you think that the traffic is literally going to come right through your front windows. I mean, it is, there's a lot of traffic that way and I really wouldn't want to encourage anybody walking that way, especially once they cross over. There are no sidewalks on either side of 123th Street as you go down to Second Avenue. There's a shale wall and then there's grass. I know I'm a walker and this is an area I avoid. I, I go, you're better off walking on the other side over here where Sunny Walk is because this side's treacherous. You can't cross the street there.
Right. So, and these are the exact kind of issues that we're trying to address and, and the mistakes that we had made in, in 2003 and earlier. And, you know, it's not, it's not meant to pick on people who are coming in, but it is meant to make the incremental changes that will, that will change that, that will shift that environment from a, an environment that's totally unfriendly to pedestrians to one that's at least amenable and conscious that they exist. So those are the sorts of things that we're going for.
The better side.
Just to bring this back to where we want to be for the zoning point, what is it that we have to deal with here? Because we're going to send something to the planning commission and they're going to say, well, yeah, but you didn't address this, that, and the other thing. And it's not our, if it's not our place to address it, can we just look at whether or not they should get their variances?
Yes, and I appreciate.
Rather than spend an hour talking about something that isn't.
Right, right.
I mean, I walk up that way on occasion and I walk up 125th Street and Stephen is absolutely right about it being dangerous. But on the other hand, you know, if she has a parking lot or a parking area here and the city told her to put those there, she shouldn't be penalized now until the city's ready, ready to come back in some way and help her with this dumpster thing just because she's not moving it. She shouldn't, she shouldn't have to move it on her own because the city told her to put it there. So, I, I mean, that's not right, even though, James, you're correct in saying we want to make things better incrementally.
Absolutely.
Maybe there's a different incremental way to do it than to say that she can't expand her business and get back on her feet because, you know, you can see a dumpster behind the thing. I just, you know.
So this is, this is in no way trying to prevent them from expanding the business.
I understand that. And I mean, we're spending a lot of time.
With the setbacks necessarily. I, I just, again, I would hate for the planning commission to be put into a challenging or a limited situation where they can't provide meaningful critiques. And I think Katie addressed the point, right? We can, we can provide a, a conditional approval that these concerns are addressed. The, the one thing that I'm.
But not necessarily penalized by the planning commission for something that really wasn't her fault. You know, and for the planning commission to say, well, we can't, we can't approve this site plan because you followed what we told you to do back in 2003 and now we don't like that anymore. You know what I mean? It just doesn't seem, we can, we can suggest that they do it, but on the other hand, you know, we're in a bind right now and we can't be worried about the bind the planning commission might be in. That's kind of like the way I see it.
I want to say that back in 2003, the gentleman who worked in code and the zoning department, they were really tough on us and we were thankful because, you know, they didn't let us fool around and make any funny business with plumbing or anything. And it was a good experience, you know? Some of the decisions weren't the cheapest, but we went along with what they said. So I, I do kind of feel like we're being penalized for, for following what was suggested back to us then, you know, back then. And then back then, we didn't own the parking lot across the street from us, which we since have acquired. And we are working with the city about how we might deal with some watershed issues in order to fix the surface over there. And the truth is, is at that point, even though it's a separate parcel, that side of the street is probably your better bet, even with a parking lot, to address some sidewalks.
Stephanie or Liza, if, if the zoning board gave you guys the variances you're seeking this evening and the planning commission came back and asked that the dumpsters be moved and the sidewalk put in, would you need to change the variances you're seeking this evening?
No.
Okay. Then I think Kathy, to your point, you guys can move this along and the planning commission can do whatever they'd like.
Right. And we could make, and we maybe could put into our vote the fact that we would like the planning, we know, we, we, I don't know how you would word it, but that the planning commission certainly can look at these things, but without making a stipulation that, in any way, that, you know, whatever the planning commission says goes. Because maybe they could ease up a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, Andy, is Andy on the call this tonight? Maybe he could chime in. But I don't think that the zoning board can stipulate anything to the planning commission or the other way around.
No, or in any way, in, you know.
Right, well.
Something that I guess says we're going to do.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Um, I think there's two ways you can approach it. James and Katie were discussing the idea of considering approving the variances with a condition that they obtain their planning commission approval. That, that's appropriate, but it's not very meaningful because they need planning commission site plan approval regardless of whether or not they needed the variances. It's required by code. So it's not a condition that really sets anything forth. The, the concerns raised, and, and in my opinion, are legitimate, but, but they are site plan concerns. You may want to consider taking the reverse approach. We've all been looking at a site plan that some individual board members may have some serious problems with, but it's outside your jurisdiction. The reverse approach would be to consider the variances and make clear in your decisions on the variances that you are taking no position whatsoever on the site plan that was presented and, or even to the effect that you've identified some concerns with the site plan, but it's outside of your purview. It doesn't impact your ability to consider the two things before you tonight. One, side yard setbacks. And two, a special use permit for residential on the first floor of the, the home, which really aren't germane to the legitimate site plan considerations that are being raised.
Right. I agree.
That's fine.
Does anybody else from, anybody else on the board have anything they'd like to add?
No.
Or is there anybody here, anybody else here who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, we now close the public portion. And members of the board, do you have anything you'd like to say before we vote? If not, Katie, do we have a secret?
Um, yes. Madam Chair, hold on one second. Madam Chair, I move that in ZB 2020-59 that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause a significant of our mill impact.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Post? Carrie, do we have a motion on the two separate variances have to be addressed separately? Am I right? James or Andy?
Yeah, I think they should be.
Okay.
Yes, it would be a vote to approve the set, the side yard setback variance. And then it'd be a vote to approve the special use permit.
Right, okay. Does anybody want to make the motion on the area variance?
I'll make a motion to approve the side yard setback variance.
Okay, Mark makes the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Jack McCann. And on the motion, John Normile?
Yes, to approve.
Yes, to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Mark Pelosi?
Approve.
And myself, Kathy Conroy, approve. So you have your area variance and now we'll go on to the special use permit. Do we have a motion to approve the special use permit?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Oh, we got to bless you. Oh, okay.
I heard a sneeze.
Do we have a motion on the special use permit?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, a positive motion to approve the special use permit based on the fact that it is really not a self-created problem. It is a, it is a unique situation in the city and not one that we see often. I don't believe it's going to change the character of the neighborhood in a negative way. And I did, you know, I will go on record as saying that I had that concern about the parking, but that it is, that is out of my purview and that will be addressed by the planning commission.
Okay, do we have a second on that for the special use permit approval?
I'll second.
Mark, is that you, Mark?
It was two of us.
All right, give it to Mark and on the motion, Jack or John Normile?
Vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to approve.
Mark Pelosi?
Yes.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, yes. Okay, so you have your zoning board approvals and now back to the zoning or planning board. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Okay. Bye.
Next case, the first case for new business. ZBA 2021003, an area variance for 576 Fifth Avenue. Larry Toon seeks an area variance for a parking deficiency. Three spaces proposed, 21 required for an adaptive reuse project, a residential in a vacant school. Mr. Toon or his representative present?
Yeah, both are. This is Lisa again from CAP.
Ah, okay.
So we prepared this plan for Larry Toon and WPNC Construction. This plan is to convert the forming Lansingburg High School, most recently used as the Lansingburg School District administrative building into 21 residential units. The proposal is to create seven studio slash block apartments, eight one-bedroom apartments and six two-bedroom apartments. He would be using the historic tax credit. The building is eligible for the national register. By using the tax credit, that will give some extra funds to do some of the things that are required to keep the building eligible to be on the national register. As you stated, the variance we're looking for is for not being able to provide the full amount of parking. Mentioned that my site plan does reference 42 parking spaces because when we did our building permit denial and I talked to Dave Sharon, he was looking at the two spaces per unit for new units. And the zoning staff has interpreted it as a deficiency building that we are, that we can use one space.
You say that, could you say that just a little louder, please? I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Sure. So when we got our building permit denial from Dave Sharon, I asked him how many spaces we needed and he was thinking two because we're creating new units. So in our, in our site plan, we're referencing 42 spaces that we're, we're not able to provide that full amount. But the zoning staff has determined that only one space per unit would be required. So the deficiency isn't actually 42, well, not deficiency, we're providing three, but the total amount of parking is 21 as you referred to. But I would just want to explain, that's why our plan says 42, but we are talking about 21 spaces, which makes the problem seem a lot less onerous. Okay, so we, we have taken this to the planning board to get a conceptual review of the site plan. They're very enthusiastic about the project. Their biggest concern revolves around the reverse angle parking. They are not sure it's necessary. They've asked the client to get a parking study to see if it perhaps is not needed. We're contracting with Chaz and Engineering to get that done. Tonight Larry will give you some anecdotal information about his experience with the neighborhood. We're asking that when you make your decision, you make it not based on the reverse angle parking and let planning make the decision as to whether or not we put the reverse angle parking.
Sorry, I'm missing, reverse, did you say?
Yes, reverse angle parking. So it's just that angled parking there on 115th Street. You pull forward and then you back into it. That's the accepted modern way of doing angled parking because it's so similar to parallel parking.
I was just going to say, isn't that parallel parking?
It is just like it, only you're going at a sharper angle.
Oh, for heaven's sake, that's bullshit, huh? Okay. Made me look like I'm ignorant when in fact, well, it's, it's, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Lisa.
But it, but it's at an angle.
All right, all right, whatever.
So the angle parking on 115th Street is not there currently. So we're, we're, if, if the neighbors are out tonight with pitchforks and, or at the planning meeting, you know, to say, you can't do this to us, you know, this is just too much. We were making an effort to try to add some on-street parking. It isn't very much. And like I said, the planning board doesn't really like the idea of the angled parking because it's a maintenance issue. It's hard to plow. There's no place for the snow to go. So they prefer that we don't do the reverse angle parking. So we are, we are doing a study for them so they'll have more information. So we're asking when you make your decision tonight about a parking variance that you make it not based on the reverse angle parking and let the planning board decide if that is required or not. It is in the public right of way. It's not on our property. So it makes total sense that they would, you know, have a say in whether or not we do that. So we are proposing to create three spaces off of the alley towards the north of the building. There's a grassy lot towards the north of the building. You might think, well, why don't we put a bunch of parking there? And I have a few reasons why that is not the best idea. One is that we're required to have a minimum of 25% green space by the zoning ordinance. So we need to keep green space. The other is that it's an amenity for our tenants. You can see that we've got plantings, barbecue grill, pergola benches. We want the tenants to be able to come out and use the space and happy tenants or long-term tenants, and that's what Larry would like to have. And also, if we do pave that area, now we're creating a stormwater problem and we'll have to retain the water so it's not to overwhelm the city sewer system. So there's lots of reasons to not pave over that grassy area at the rear and that, I just wanted to address that in case you're saying, well, why aren't you doing that? Let's see, what else do I want to tell you about this? I want to point out that the, the building is located on a bus route. And so buildings that are on a bus route make it easier for tenants to not have cars. And also, I just want to mention in terms of the surrounding neighborhood or with respect to this property, that we have, let's see, our frontage for the building allows for 13 on-street cars. So 13 on-street cars plus our three spaces that we're creating, that's 16 that we're creating out of the 21 required spaces. So that doesn't, you know, not as much to believe if you look at it that way. Also, we'll point out that on the corner of 6th and 115th Street is supportive housing that has a parking lot of its own off the alley. And it's, my recollection is it's an underutilized parking lot. I don't believe there's a parking problem in that area. The firehouse is a catter corner to this property and I believe the firemen park in the funeral home parking lot.
Actually, it's St. Augustine's parking lot. St. Augustine's Parish parking lot, if you ever needed to have anything to do with it, you know, as police. I don't mean to interrupt, but that's whose parking lot, owns the parking lot is this church.
Okay, so it appears that the firemen perhaps park back there.
They do.
Because it's usually empty and, and then, let's see, what else do I want to tell you? Oh, and that most of the houses have alley access to their properties, not every house, especially the ones close to the corner, but most of the houses in the surrounding area have alley access. So I just want to mention those as potential mitigating factors for the parking issue. And then I was going to introduce Larry and let him talk to you about himself and, you know, what he plans to do here and his observations about the parking situation in the neighborhood as he's been frequenting it a lot. And I think he found that there's a lot of open spaces during the day. So Larry, you want to, this is Larry Toon. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Larry E. Toon, Jr. My father is Larry Toon. He's a senior. He's a small contractor for 45 years. I live in Rensselaer County for the past 14 and a half years. My kids go to April Park. I coach basketball, softball. I work for a local contractor that built a lot of buildings in Rensselaer County in the last 20 years that I've, I've been there for 25 years. And, and just witnessing, going through the parking, we proposed the angle parking because, you know, we wanted to make an effort to show some additional spaces for the planning commission and their, their review, they didn't feel that there, it was needed and the pressure was there. But, you know, we wanted to be a good neighbor and make that proposal and have a convenience there for the, the proposed tenants. My daughter does play basketball with Dags and Julie McBride, 14 so far. What's that?
I said, aha, only a block away, right?
Block away. So I spent the last couple of years just sitting outside parked in front of the gym, waiting for my daughter, Monday, Wednesdays, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sundays, varying times, 7:00 AM, noon, 2:00, 5:00, 7:00, 9:00 PM. I, I.
Nobody parks by 115th and 5th. Is that the point you're going to make?
Yes, and as you'll see when the, when the photos, and I do have a photo array of different times. It was just always, you know, just seeing, there's also on 100, on Fifth Ave in front of 576, that entire block, there's several vacant buildings as well. So it, it's just, yeah, as you stated, I, as I drive around there multiple times a day, sometimes twice a day, morning, evening, afternoon, it's, it appears to be an abundance of parking.
Right.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Toon? Seems to be very, what he's looking for, I don't know how the board members feel about it, but it seems to be very straightforward. He needs 21 spots. Yes?
I was just going to ask, do you offer any kind of incentive to, do you plan to, to the tenants to, you know, use, take advantage of public transportation? Do you have bike racks? I, I can't tell if those are bike racks on the, on the site plan, but I just wondered, just out of, you know, curiosity to see if, if that was going to be encouraged as well.
We do plan to have bike racks. I think we show them on, in the back of the green area.
No, I don't, I don't have any exterior bike racks shown at the moment. We were talking about indoor bike storage for the tenants. We certainly can add exterior bike racks for guests. I don't think a tenant will be leaving their bicycle outside, but there's plenty of room in the building to do bicycle storage for the tenants. And I, I meant to also just point out that obviously this is a building that's been used for 100 years and it doesn't have a parking lot and it's.
Right.
There's, you know, been a demand on the neighborhood and when it was used at the school, it, you couldn't even park in front of it likely because it would have been a bus loading zone. So the residential use demand isn't really that different than what it's been over the years as far as I can tell.
We did, we did talk about a bike rack. Thank you for correcting me, interior bike storage. There is currently a bike rack there that must be from the school. I'm sorry, yeah.
Could be a monument.
Time of walking around that building for the last year.
That could probably be part of its historical value.
Yeah, there you go.
It's possible. It's a little rusty, but we can.
Do we have any further questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the proposal?
Can I just ask what the, what's being shown on the site plan adjacent to this no storage area?
That's the pergola to the left of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'll just clarify, I'm absolutely not opposed to this proposal. I think it's a great project. And I'd echo the, the, the need for interior bike storage, long-term bike storage for tenants. I think that would be a great amenity and would encourage more people to not have to use a car or park. And I wasn't at the planning commission meeting. I, I just, I, and I don't want to get too into site plan comments before Kathy kicks me out.
About funeral home versus St. Augustine's parking lots and zoning board versus planning commission.
Well, James, James, I was at the meeting, so I think I can summarize those comments really, really briefly.
Oh, I.
The applicant, the applicant's shown a willingness to, to, to work, you know, with the city on this plan and try to provide some additional parking.
Okay. That, that's fine. I, I'll leave it at that then. We can talk about site plan stuff another time.
Yeah, if we're, we're just really, oh, Gary McLaughlin is here to speak.
Hi, Kathy.
I believe, yes. Is that all right, James? Did you bring him in, James, or whatever? Yeah.
I didn't bring him in, but that's fine.
Introduce yourself, please, and your address.
Hi, Gary McLaughlin, 34 115th Street. I'm right across the street from the school. And the parking situation is not as, as being described. When the school was in there, when the, the officers were in there, there wasn't 20 people working in the building. So there wasn't 20 vehicles and it was still crowded. Nobody parks on Fifth Avenue in front of that school. They all, the people that live across the street on Fifth Avenue park on 115th Street. So, you know, what you see, if you come, if you come up at night, both sides of the street will be filled with parking. I had to have handicap parking put in for my wife and my upstairs tenant because they couldn't park anywhere near our house because of the cars parking all over the area. And why bother with three parking spots for a building that size? Why, you know, it's, it's not feasible. Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, Gary.
So, so that actually dovetails into what I was trying to describe about the site plan process pretty nicely. The, at the planning commission meeting, the, the, the commission asked that a parking study for this development be done. That doesn't necessarily have to affect a decision by the ZBA this evening, but that parking study is going to be done to alleviate some of the concerns that, that Gary just mentioned. The commission was, was actually wondering if it was worth putting in the angled parking if there was a need for it. So their purpose for requesting the report was not, not that the area had a lack of parking, but that the area might have too much parking. But either way, the results of that study will, will address that issue.
Well, let's hope the studies.
The area north of the school.
Gary, I'm sorry, Gary, but you're, you're done. In a word, you're done. Didn't mean to sound, I don't mean to sound offensive, but we're back to the, the other person who was speaking was part of the, the city. As far as your input is concerned, it's over.
Well, I, I, I actually, I did want just some additional input from Gary if possible, which was.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, as long as you ask them, but I mean, this isn't like a back and forth.
No, no, I understand, I understand, Kathy.
Yeah.
So the, yeah, I, I was just, Chazan just reached out to me today to, to ask about the scope of this parking study that, again, the planning commission, not the ZBA, requested. So Gary, if, if there's a time of day where the parking is the worst, if you could just give. if you could just give that time of day to me, um, I'll make sure that when they do their survey, they are using that, that, that time and date.
Um, and that I just suggest is Aaron, right? Perhaps you might wanna tell him, um, your name because, uh, all you are is the emblem from the city of Troy on the, uh, which is difficult for all of us in terms of addressing you at this time. You know what I mean? Because, uh, your name isn't anywhere on the insignia here.
It's at the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, it's on the bottom of mine too, Kathy.
Well, I don't see it.
Bottom left-hand corner.
I see mutant stop video. Well, I'm not gonna get into that now either. Okay. All right, I see now, Aaron is on the, all right, it is there now. It wasn't, it isn't there. Okay, forget it, forget it.
Uh, Gary, Gary, what, what time of day is the worst for parking in the area?
Uh, it's, it's probably in the evening after six o'clock when everybody gets home.
Okay, I'll make sure that as part of the parking study that, that was requested by the planning commission, that they conduct the survey at six PM on a weekday.
Or the weekends too, you know, it's, it, they're, they're gonna be there twenty-four hours, you know, it's,
We'll do both. We'll do a Wednesday and a Saturday.
All right.
Okay, and you might, uh, I guess maybe I wanna address this to you, Larry, um, I don't know, or Lisa, or whoever. You might wanna, uh, check with St. Augustine's about the availability of parking in our lot. Um, it isn't used as much as it used to be. Um, and that might be a possibility of, if you get a letter from them saying that, you know, they would be amenable to having you use some spots in their lot being available, shall I say? Okay?
Okay.
Do Larry go away? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. I, I got it, understood.
Yeah, so you might wanna, um, give that a shot and give that to your, um, your, uh, firm, Chasens, to, uh, have them include that as a possibility of, of where you might be able to get some spots.
Okay. I also spoke with Jim Gully, um, of District One and, uh,
Uh-huh.
suggested talking to the Lansenberg Senior Housing because their parking lot,
I thought about that too.
Never seems to be at, at capacity.
Yeah, you're right. I, I, I thought about that too, cuz that's, you're right.
I have a nephew that goes to Catholic Central and plays ball, so I'm over there a lot and,
Yeah.
there, there just never seems like that parking lot is fully.
Yeah, that's a very, that is a good point.
Okay.
So you have a couple of possibilities there and, and, um, other than Gary McLaughlin, is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, do we have any, any, uh, comments from the board? Anything anybody wants to say? You're more than welcome to ask questions or just to make an observation?
I've got a, uh, I don't know if it's a question as much as a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, sounds like, um, on one side of the equation, there, there's gonna be a, a parking study done to see if there, there is a problem with parking. And on the other side, there's been discussion with the applicant about places to look in the neighborhood to obtain parking. But if it, if it gets to the point where the, um, the study comes back and shows that there's a problem, but we've already approved this variance, what, what's the recourse, I guess?
And if, if I could answer that for you.
Oh, Andy, okay, go ahead.
I, I, I was at the planning commission meeting as well. Um, their, their request for a study, uh, and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but was to, for them to make a better and more informed decision on whether or not the proposed angle in parking is something that they're gonna require in the site plan. Uh, the variance before this board is for a, a request to allow three parking, onsite parking spaces where twenty-one are required. So they're requesting a variance of eighteen spaces, a deficiency of eighteen spaces. Uh, the parking study was, is, in my opinion, irrespective of that. The planning commission is trying to figure out if those proposed nine angle-in spaces in the front are warranted. And that will be driven by the results of that study. The request before you this evening is for a variance for, to allow three onsite where twenty-one are required. So it's in effect, an eighteen-spot onsite variance.
Okay.
Yeah, the applicant doesn't have, uh, yeah, the applicant does not have the opportunity to provide any more parking onsite. That's just the limitations of the site.
Right.
By code, they need the variance because they can't have them onsite. But then there's this other question completely unrelated as to, you know, is it worth improving the city's street to provide some?
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, cuz this, the angled parking isn't on, uh, Mr. Toon's property.
Exactly.
It's on the city, it's on city property.
Correct.
Yeah. But I mean, if you hearken back to De Fazio's and many others we have o- over the, um, years, it helps if you can have a letter, I don't know, just along the way, if, 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 uh, he wants to be able to tell people where you can park in that lot over there. We have five spaces that are designated for my property or whatever, like, like, make people feel better, you know?
Those agreements are what make the city run. Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, so do we have any other, uh, remarks from the board or any questions? Or are we ready to take a vote?
I guess I just have a comment, and that is that, you know, the building has been vacant. And I think it's important to recognize that it's going to be a huge improvement to a vacant building. It's going to hopefully be on the National Historic Register. And, you know, it, it's, it's a problem, but it's not, it wasn't created by, um, the tenant or by the applicant who is clearly willing to do what it takes to make this happen, so. For what that's worth.
No, it's worth a lot, Katie. Thank you. Okay, Mark and Jack, do you have anything you wanna ask or question, or are we ready to vote?
I, uh,
Nothing further from me.
Uh, just piggyback off of Katie. I think this is a wonderful project and, uh, I'd be interested in here. Eighteen spots is a lot. But I think we could work that out unless, uh, Andy or Aaron tells me different. I mean, can't we, uh, I, I believe I brought this up on the parking spots on Congress Street, and I think the guy made a deal with the guy that had the parking lot, uh, across from Stewart's.
Yes, I know, I think,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know the project you're talking about.
Yeah, and I think, I think the deal has been struck there, although I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, but, but I remembered that. Yes, you're right. Okay, so do we have a mo-, do we need a secret here? I don't even,
Yes, we do. Um, and here, I move that in, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, zero zero three, that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Hey, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Posted. Carrie, now do we have a motion on the, um, proposal, the application? I lost my paper.
Bounce here, I'll make a, um, motion, a positive motion to approve the area variance, um, in ZBA twenty twenty-one, uh, zero zero three. Um, based on the findings of fact that I, uh, this was not a self-created, um, issue. The need for this variance wasn't self-created, and I do not believe, uh, that will cause any, um, detriment to the character of the neighborhood. In fact, I think it's gonna be a great addition, uh, um, to the character of the neighborhood. So it's a positive motion.
We have a, a second?
A second.
Okay, Jack.
You don't live there.
And on the motion? Uh, John Normile?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Mark Palazzi?
Yes.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
And Kathy Conroy, I also vote yes. So, good luck, Mr. Toon.
Thank you, thank you also.
And I hope it all works out with the neighbors and the parking, or the, the study, whatever. Okay. See you around the block.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next case, ZB twenty twenty-one zero zero two, twenty-one oh nine fifteenth street. A use variance in an R-two zone. Samuel Lynn is proposing a community center on the first floor of an existing structure. Mr. Lynn, present?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Would you like to, uh, introduce yourself and tell us what you wanna do, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Samuel. Hi, uh, board of members here presented tonight. First of all, apologies on the application. The formatting is a little bit messed up. Um, it was done by DocuSign and he was not able to recognize the line, so you may need to read.
That's right, I read it. We read it all, I think. It was easy enough to read.
Appreciate it. So the, the proposal, um, is for the first floor and the basement to be operated as a nonprofit community and student center. Student center was the proposal that two weeks ago presented to the planning commission and was approved by the planning commission. And this proposal is for students and friends related to the tenants on the second floor, uh, especially the students and associates from RPI. So this place is about two blocks away, uh, from the RPI campus. And at the time of purchasing the property back in June twenty twenty, that was the closing, um, as the buyer, as, actually, as the co-buy, my wife and I were buyers, I received the understanding that a property was previously operated as a mixed-use facility with the first floor rented to St. Peter's Health as a midwifery. And that was about for the past five years. So, uh, the first floor has been operated as a professional office and the second floor has been rented out to, uh, tenants. Um, so therefore, at the time of the purchase, I had the intention, my wife and I had the intention to continue to operate a facility for communities' assets, but not as a business. Um, yeah, and I would just add one more thing before I, I think that would be sufficient for the introduction. We signed a contract for this property just a few days after a pandemic was declared last year. And, um, uh, throughout this time, you know, my wife and I, we found ourselves very privileged to still have a job. Uh, my wife is a nurse at Albany Med and I, uh, have been working from home since I moved to Upstate, my office in, in San Francisco. And, uh, so we, we, we are very privileged and, uh, we, we just are finding ways to have our own nonprofit projects to give back to the community. And that's the main cause for us to have this idea to run a student center, uh, just, yeah, the first floor of that building being a nonprofit space, uh, and operation, uh, for the students nearby. With that, I, I, I opened it back to the board if you have any questions.
But could I ask you, uh, where do you live?
Uh, I live, I live in twenty-one oh nine fifteenth street where the property is located.
Oh, you live there?
Yes.
And so, are you the people upstairs? I mean, how many floors does?
So currently, I'm occupying a unit upstairs. Uh, other units are now being, uh, vacant because we are planning to do some renovation there. Um, I have been occupying the, 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 one of the units for about, uh, uh, almost six months now. I mean, just a weekend ago, my wife and I moved to Albany, uh, because we are thinking once the renov-, you know, once the approvals are granted by the city, then we can do some more major renovation within the building. So we will, we hope to be away from the building for, for a few months.
So you're not, uh, are you moving to Albany or are you going to just live there and then, I mean, you're under no obligation to come back to this address, but do you intend to come back to this address?
I do intend to come back to the address, yes.
Okay. Um, does anybody else from the board have any questions before I?
Yeah, I, I have a, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, John.
The, um, there, there is a, a definition of community center somewhere in the, the city zoning. I don't have it in front of me right now, but it, it says open to the public. From, from what you described in your application and, and from what you just said in your introduction, it's the, the, the space that you're planning for the first floor is for the, the residents of the building and their friends and family? Can you talk a little bit more about how that's gonna work?
Sure, John. I, I, I realize that as well, um, that, and that's why at first, uh, while we submitted to the planning commission, we stated as a student center. Now, our, my, my vision, of course, it, it's open to the public, but, but due to the space limitation, uh, you know, we will not be able to host the entire city of Troy, for example. And, and for, 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 uh, but, but I, I like to understand from the board if it's, you know, if there's any other, uh, code that would be more appropriate other than community in this case. Now, I understand it's open to the public, but we want to be very specific that this is more for, um, college students.
So, so John, um, Dave Sheeran and I, we discussed, we discussed this, um, in some detail. Um, you know, we don't have a use of student center. So we were looking for a comparable use that we, that we define, and this was as close as we could get to something that, that, that fit the description. The, the other, the other option we had was going, um, the route of calling it a private club. But I, I thought that that, you know, that, that kind of makes it sound like it's a, you know, a slightly different use, um, than, than the student center, so.
But, but, but if you call it a community center open to the public, um, then, I don't know, this is the, uh, cynical side of me coming in. And that word gets out, and also you're not charging, you, you don't wanna charge anybody to have them come in. And then you get, I don't know, fifteen kids, let's say from Catholic high, so I'm not, nobody thinks I'm, uh, discriminating against Troy high, come up and decide they're gonna come in there and have a party. And you're gonna say, I'm sorry, you can't come in, and they're gonna say, why can't we come in? It's open to the public. And there's no charge. And I say this nicely, and you're in Albany. You know what I mean? I, 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 I think there has to be some restrictions on who, who can come in and what open to the public with no restrictions and no money changing hands means. Anybody wanna help me out with this, or is it just me?
Samuel, is it, is it, is it that the space, um, is the space controlled by the occupants? Access to the space on the first floor controlled by the occupants on, of the second floor?
Um, well, so the, the first, uh, in theory, yes. However, we, uh, the way that we're going to restrict assets is to have the, um, how do you describe that? Kind of, uh, uh, code, uh, that you enter through the front door.
A key code like?
Yeah, a key door like that, so.
Whatever.
Exactly. So my, you know, whoever has that key code will be able to come through. But of course, I'm aware that, uh, security is an issue. We, uh, I mean, the, the, the property is located in Troy. Uh, so, so we, we do, I, I, I am concerned about that. I'm trying to figure out how can we make sure? Because I, I also, when I say it's open to the public and it's specifically for college students, I also want to make sure it's a safe space for them. I cannot, uh, uh, you know, allow, you know, anyone who just want to hang out there. I mean, I, I mean, in the, in the good, for a good reason to protect the college students of their use of the space. Um, but therefore, uh, so primarily, or I can say initially, the key code access is granted to the, uh, to the tenants. Now, I am also trying to define some of the restriction. What can you do there in, in, as well as the operation hours? So you cannot, it's not open twenty-four hours. Uh, there's some restriction on what can you do in the building, what can you not do i- in the building? Um, so that, that will be, uh, laid out, uh, but I do not have that handy.
Mr. Lynn, I got one question. Uh, the building is currently owned in your name, I'm assuming, and your wife's name?
Yes, in both our names, Mark.
So I have a, I have some reservations about the classification as a community center because I'm pretty sure the definition requires ownership as either a publicly-owned building or a not-for-profit-owned building, which,
Okay.
it, neither is the case here. Um, it's being, it's privately owned. Uh, it's owned by you and your wife. So I don't think it meets the qualification or classification as a community center. And I know what you're trying to do, and I think you have good intentions. I just don't think that classification matches.
Got it. And with that, Mark, I, I don't- Got it. With that, Mark, I, I don't know if I can ask you a question. I mean, do you, do you have any recommendation of which classification might fit in this?
If we were to, if we were to reclassify this, I mean, it, it essentially fits the definition of a private club. It, you know, he's describing PINs, access codes. You know, the, the difference between, you know, this private club and the private clubs that we would typically see is really the, the question of whether or not alcohol is being served on the premises. I mean, that, that's really what it would come down to.
What about, if it's only going to be used by the, the tenants upstairs and their friends and family, et cetera, couldn't it also just like the, I don't know, I live upstairs and I'm going to invite my friends over and we're going to go downstairs to the rec room, which is part of, you know, part of my rent? That I'm, that this is, uh, place is available, this floor is available to me as part of the money that I'm paying in my rent upstairs? And I can have my party with my student friends. And then my party and my get together and my whatever. But I live upstairs and I have to be there for my friends to come over. I mean, it's like the building I live in, you know? There was a, there was a room downstairs, but people just don't come in off the street. I would have to be with them in order for them to come in and, because that's basically what you're saying, isn't it, Mr. Lynn? You're not saying, I mean, it's, it's a worth, it's a worthy thing to say. You know, you're going to have it there for everybody in the community to come in, but it also is to a certain extent, not very realistic. I understand completely what you're saying about this, this, the college kids and et cetera. So I don't, how many units are upstairs? Or how many, or let me put it differently. How many students would you anticipate would be renting from you upstairs? Either in one unit or what, whatever?
I think we, we, we're also asking the building department to grant the permit to furnish the attic. So depending on that, assuming attic is going to be furnished, then we should have about, I would estimate about, could be six to 10.
Six to 10 people living upstairs?
Correct.
So how would you feel about making the first floor available only to some of those six to 10 people?
I, I'm also okay with that. I, I, to be quite frank, in front of, of the board here. My, originally, that's my thought. I mean, if we are just going with R2 zoning as is, I, I don't know if that's why you're suggesting Kathy, so just leaving it residential? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I, I, to me, if you, if you call it a community center, and as Mark said, you can't really call it a community center, it's in your name. But that aside, if you, if you call it something where people feel that they can just come over and it's, it's an admirable thing to say, I want to have a place for people to come in. I don't want to say off the street, but let's just say off the street and, you know, hang out. You have no idea who these people are. They have no, they have no affinity to you. I mean, you know, they could come in and, you know, destroy your place and you wouldn't even know who they were if you're saying that it's open to the public. Whereas you might have it open to, and, and so if you have six to 10 people upstairs and, and three of them invite their friends over and they're all doing different things in the recreation area downstairs, that's different than open it just having an open door to the public.
Yeah, I'm not against that idea, Kathy. My only concern is the layout that we are proposing downstairs. It's, if, if it doesn't fit to residential, then I need, I need somehow to reconcile that.
Right, so therefore we need James or Aaron or somebody to tell us their feelings on. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I'll echo Aaron's points from earlier. You know, it, it does sound quite similar to a membership club. We, we've approved those in the past or talked about those in the past and we've applied stipulations to mitigate some of the negative impacts that would occur in neighborhoods. You know, things, things like.
Music or whatever.
Music, alcohol use or, or serving alcohol rather, I would say. And, and number of people that can be on site at a given time.
Right.
Well, that'll, that'll also be a fire code. That will come in with, with code enforcement and building code compliance. How many people can actually occupy the first floor at any given time?
So, so then what category would this floor fit into?
Well, if it were to be a, a membership club as, as James was just describing, then the, the first floor would be classified as assembly space. And I, please don't quiz me on exactly what that means, but there's, there's a number of requirements that, that they would have to meet in terms of, you know, doorways and just occupancy limits.
Occupancy, but not in terms of, you don't think zoning issues?
Well, if, if the use variance is, is granted this evening, then, then no, there would be no.
Well, we would.
And, and maybe, maybe just to get the feedback from the applicant. Samuel, you, you know, this, this membership club option, it, it sounds like would allow you to do what you're looking to do, right? You would be able to have, the people who live there can, can in theory be part of this club. And if they have guests come over, they could join the membership club. You know, you could, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know if Andy wants to chime in here on what the requirements would be, but other, other, excuse me, membership clubs charge people, you know, $5 to join and they can, you know, that sort of thing. They can come in and, and use the space in perpetuity. You could, I, I, you might be able to lower that to $1. I don't, I don't know. Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, I just, I, I, I'm tearing through the code as, as we speak. Everyone has some real good ideas. One of the ones I haven't heard yet is that this might meet the definition of a multifamily dwelling with a community room. There, there's nothing prohibiting an apartment building or multifamily dwelling having a community room. And then access to that community room is controlled by the owner of the property. And the owner of the property can, you know, allow other people in versus limit its use to people who reside there. But it is controlled by the property owner as an ancillary use of the multifamily dwelling use.
Yeah, that sounds like, that sounds like what I'm thinking of.
Sounds more.
In my mind. Huh? John, go ahead, John.
I just wanted to say, it sounds more in keeping with the neighborhood.
And in keeping with the neighborhood. Well, yeah, I mean, the neighborhood better than I, but nevertheless, in that kind of neighborhood. Yeah, especially if you're going to have that number of people upstairs. It isn't like you're only having, you know, two roommates living in one apartment upstairs and having this space downstairs. That's a lot of people upstairs to choose from, to, to use this building, I mean, to use this floor. It sounds like an admirable thing you want to do. Why ever would you want to do it? Have a nonprofit just to be like a nice person or?
Is that a question directed to me, Kathy?
Yeah, yeah. It, it sounds like an admirable thing really that you, that you want to do. And my question to you is, why? Why would you want to, I mean, I can envision you and your wife looking at this property saying, you know, we can have apartments upstairs and down here we can have this space for people to come in and use it and we're not going to charge them. It's going to nonprofit. What would you want to do in that, if I might ask? You don't find that very often, like Samuel, that people want to do things like this.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you. Kathy, I don't know how much details I should go in with my background and what I've experienced. Back in, back in high school, medical doctors, one of them told me that I should not even consider college, just give up in life. Basically, that's what she told me, that I cannot handle college. And I can tell you how privileged I am to not only finish college. Right now I'm pursuing my second master's degree. During the college years, it was quite tough for me to get through. And, and now I, I went to college at UC Berkeley where there was exactly a student center there. So for me.
Now you gotta make me, now you gotta make me cry for the rest of the night. I mean, you are, you are really a nice person.
Yeah, yeah. But, but you know, I'm just saying I'm privileged. I mean, my wife and I have tried to find ways to give back. I mean, we, I know that our capacity is limited. So we're not, you know, selling that, hey, we have to make this a community center. Just whatever that will be, following the city code as well as to care for whoever is using the space to make it really safe. I think the architect who is helping us to draw the, the, the planning for the, for each floor actually, he is considering it being a public space. So I think maybe James or Aaron mentioned this, that in terms of, you know, how, how big the gateway is and, and where we need fire, fire sprinkles. You know, those are, those are the things that he has considered. And I want to make sure I follow that because if it's truly just a residential space, I don't think it's as safe if, and if we know, I would prefer to know, for example, the capacity on the first floor, you know, how many people are legally to be there? You know, if we're at our capacity, I want to make sure we have a sign like that. So then everyone is aware, things like that. But anyways, for your background, I, I've been through quite, quite a bit of interesting life experience in the West Coast. But I, I do recognize I'm young, young, probably the youngest among all of you. So speaking of life experiences.
Okay, Samuel, now you've offended us.
Hey, hey, hey.
I'm only kidding, obviously. Yeah, no, that's, but it, you know what? As much as you told us, it kind of makes sense now of what you want to do, that it isn't just, I don't know, a fly-by-night kind of a thing. I mean, you have a purpose to it and it's an admirable purpose. And we certainly don't want to see you go wrong either here out of the kindness of your heart. You know what I mean? Like, we don't want to, I personally don't want to approve something for you that in the end is going to be a negative for you because you're going to get taken advantage of in, in a foolish way. Whereas I think the membership club roof might be, might be a good control for what you want to do. And at the same time, you know, be something that the city can live with and the neighbors and everybody else can live with. And it would be a win-win all the way around. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
I just want to, I, I, I appreciate the intent here and I, I think it's, it's a great suggestion, suggested use. And my, my only concern is if we were to approve, the board was to approve a membership club or whatever they might consider approving, that space would be allowed in perpetuity regardless if it's the applicant running it or somebody else in, in 20 years. So, so just want to, just, you know, voice that concern. If a, a membership club, you know, the stipulations I think are important to consider here. If we did, if we approved the membership club and did not have stipulations, you know, you, you could see an Elks Lodge or, or something else that might have a more intense impact on the neighborhood in, in the future.
Can I, can I ask something here though of Andy? Is, is that different than a multifamily dwelling with the community room, Andy?
It, it, it would be. And in, in terms of process, the, the application as it was published in the legal notice was for a use variance to allow for a community center. I agree with Mark that this doesn't meet the definition because it's not going to be owned by a not-for-profit or a public entity. So regardless of what it's going to be classified, I don't think you can take that action this evening because the legal notification was for a variance for a community center. So I don't think we have the ability to shift without re-advertising for what it's going to be. My, my suggestion would be to, to table this. Let the applicant revisit it with, with staff and myself and let us really tear into those definitions and see if we can get to him, get him to a place that works for both him as well as the city.
And then could I just ask you one thing before I ask if there's anybody else here? Say it goes the way you just suggested, multifamily dwelling or something. Is that the way, those are the words that appear in the legal notice? Or what, a multifamily dwelling? You know, what, what?
And, and I, and I don't know that, that a multifamily apartment use requires a use variance in this zone. I just don't know the answer to that.
Right, okay, alright.
But if it did, then yes, that's what, that's, that's, I, I think, whatever, we can put our collective heads together and come up with best meets what Mr. Lynn is, is seeking, then that's what it would be advertised for, for the next meeting. And I'm saying that as the second youngest person here.
Okay, yeah, sure, right. Did you hear it? Okay, he's got that. I think there's a couple of people here might have, take issue with that, Andrew. Maybe Aaron, whose face we never see. James, forget James. James is a kid. What about the, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition?
Hello, this is Lisa Rodriguez from 1986 15th Street. Perhaps you recognize me?
Yes, recognize you and your address isn't too far away.
No, it isn't.
Okay.
So I, I don't know that I'm necessarily totally opposed. I have all of the same concerns that the board does. I was suspicious when I first heard of this proposal. I'm sorry, Mr. Lynn, but I don't know you, so I often think the worst. And what came to my mind was de facto fraternity. And having lived in a student neighborhood for as long as I have, you get a little wary about fraternities. And one that's not under the umbrella of RPI doesn't even have any mechanisms to keep the behaviors under control. With the fraternities that are under RPI's umbrella, I have recourse. I can talk to the Greek dean. The Greek dean talks to the students and the behaviors can change if there's bad behaviors going on. So as the board was saying, you know, the, you know, control of who goes in there, who's monitoring it, is it monitored? You know, how many people is it? The hours of operations? You know, there's no parking, I believe, associated with that building. When I first read the proposal, like you all, I wondered, well, why is he doing this? Is, is, I just didn't understand. So now he's spoken and I do understand and that it's very admirable. And if, if it works out, that, you know, it could be a nice thing. But I just would say that I concur with the board that there's a lot of potential issues and a, a lot would need to be worked out to have it done in a way that it can't go wrong for the neighborhood. We already have a lot of issues because we're so many students. I can't remember the last time a homeowner bought a house on my block. Actually, I probably was the last homeowner to buy a house on our block 21 years ago. It's going over to rental because people don't want to live there. And I'm sure it's the same on that X block down. So just say, proceed with caution. You know, it's a, it's an interesting use, but has potential to go wrong. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak? Hearing out will pose the public question and.
I had a, sorry, just, I, I had a discussion with a neighbor. It, it wasn't entirely clear what their concerns were and, and they didn't have any o, other uses that they were looking to see or anything to suggest that, that might improve the use. It was, I don't want to mischaracterize their comments, but they, they refused to write them down. So I, I don't have anything of, of substance really to share with the board, but, and I don't even have their last name. So I just, I just wanted to say that there, there's a neighbor that was concerned as well. I, I just, I feel a little obligated to, to tell, you know.
Somebody did call about it.
Yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else or do we have any remarks from the board members before we vote? Or because Andy has suggested that we table it, right, that we vote to table, correct?
That was the impression I got.
That would be my suggestion, yes.
Okay, and no one from the board has anything else they would like to add at this time?
I would.
John, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, you know, when I went to RPI, there were.
Oh, big deal, John, you went to RPI.
Okay, sorry. When I went there, there were meeting rooms that you could reserve in the student union, in the library, in the communication center. I, it was a long time ago that I went to RPI. But I know there are, there are new buildings. There are rehearsal spaces for musicians, et cetera. If, and you don't have to go into it tonight, but it, it might help inform me or anyone from the public if you could talk. or anyone from the public, if you could talk about why you feel that uh the potential residents of the buildings, that their needs aren't being met by uh by space within some of the schools' buildings and and why you're doing this you know, out from under the RPI umbrella. I'm not trying to to point you in any direction, but those those were questions I I I was going to ask.
Okay. Do you understand that, Mr. Lynn?
If you, I do, is that something I need to answer right right now, or is something that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm and I might also just say along those lines, there isn't any uh stipulation you have that the that the people who would use this building have to be, have to go to RPI.
Um, well, uh, not necessarily, they're they're friends and family, I I think that those could be included. So that they don't necessarily have to be RPI students.
Right, so from that perspective, then if they weren't RPI students, they wouldn't have access to these things John's referring to, which I would also be interested in knowing what they have over there, but you might be talking about kids that go to Hudson Valley. Or Sienna or something, you know? So that would be something else you might want to consider when you when you're uh you're probably gonna dump this whole proposal by the time we get through with you, you're not gonna want to have to do anything with it, right? Forget it.
Hey, Andy, really quick, um for for making sure that we have this noticed correctly, um, you know, I I I obviously will change the agenda to reflect a more appropriate use after discussing with the applicant and staff. Uh, what about neighbor noticing, would you say that has to go back out?
Yeah, I would, I would say neighbor notice would have to go back out, um as if it was a new application, even though we're tabling it, it would have to be re-noticed and re-um published as a request for whatever definition we end up settling on as as the most advantageous, neighbors would have to go as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so Katie, Mark, Jack, anything you want to add, or no?
I would just like to add that the Andy seems to have the uh the best idea here in tabling this, there's still some unanswered questions that I might have later on, I'd like to get a hold of James about later.
Yeah, and maybe now um Mr. Lynn might have a better idea of where we're all coming from, when he flushes all this all out. Okay, so do we have a motion to table?
I'll make it.
Jack has a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have to vote one by one for table, or no? I should know this by now. Andy, do we need a?
You can take it by a vote, voice vote, I I think we can tell who's gonna be.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so we will table this until the future. Hopefully in this month, so we can get this on the road for you, Mr. Lynn, thank you very much.
I do have.
You're a very inspiring individual, yes, you may.
Okay, uh, so to the board, does that mean if we uh find out the uh, you know, the the new code to apply for, does that mean this has to go through the planning commission again?
No.
Pardon me, who answered?
No, I don't, I don't see why I would have to go to the planning commission again, it it doesn't change the the site plan, or, A- Andy, go ahead.
Just, I I'd have to look into that, because you were there for a change of use. They authorized a change of use to community center. Um, so depending upon where we land on what it's going to be, uh you may have to, I don't want to hold out false hope, false hope, but we may also land in a place where it's still a community center, but we can qualify it somehow, so I I I wouldn't say definitely yes yet, it depends on what we come up with uh for your return.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you, Andy, and uh whom will be my primary contact? Going forward.
I give you your primary contact for the for the use, um I know you've been working with Aaron initially, but I I can step in for that. Um, I I just wanted to say too that we we may be, i- if you do have to go in front of the planning commission again, we may be able to make that all happen in the same month, depending on, you know, how how complex the the use determination becomes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any further business come before this board? You have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bye-bye.
Goodnight.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thanks, everybody.
God bless you.